Praise the heavens to the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
East is gonna put on a presentation before we start.
Alright, hi guys. My name's Inna Beth Halem.
I'm Sydney McCalla.
How's it going?
So today we wanted to just come in and talk about our conference that we're going to in about three weeks. So what I'm going to show y'all is our video. We want to start off with it. So this is our Founder's Award application video, which is like the application that we use to submit ourselves for the biggest award in East. It's like the state championship of East. So that's what we applied for. We have to create like a 10-minute video describing who we are, what we are, what we do, all that stuff. So I'm gonna show you all that and then Sydney is gonna talk to you on this a little bit.
Hi, my name's Inna Beth Halem and I'm a student champion here at England High School East. In our program, we strive to do the best we absolutely can be to make an impact on our classroom and our community. We are so excited to be able to show you our program and what all we have been able to accomplish. Many aspects go into any one of the areas and these are some of the traits that we excel at to problem solve in those classes.
We are a team. Whether it's learning from East students with experience, problem solving and team builders, or collaborating on a project, we value and prioritize teamwork in our program, incorporating many types of team builders that require distinctive thinking and working as one. Functional teamwork is a trait we have and continue to instill in the students here at EHS East.
We are growth. One of the key aspects of our program we try focusing on is expanding our skills and knowledge. The more we know, the more help we can be to our community. We have students in our program obtaining drone licenses, going to East training classes, taking sports pictures of high school games and even Division I college games. Inside their classroom, students are working to learn and master new programs and technologies and inviting East leaders in to help us incorporate a new method of managing and organizing projects into our program. Some of the softwares we have been using are Blender, ArcGIS, SketchUp, GarageBand, BandLab, Tinkercad, Adobe, Photoshop, Premiere Pro, Illustrator, CapCut, Glowforge, Drone Link, DJI fly, Drone2map, and Aloft Air To Control.
We are advanced. What makes us East students and sets us apart from other classes is our ability to take a simple problem and create a technological sophisticated solution. We are able to incorporate all of the new technology and softwares our students are learning into projects that help us to make a difference. Our England Alert System project is the development of an app that will facilitate the flow of accurate information while centralizing it in one location. Due to Facebook being inaccurate and disorganized, student Alyssa Larson collaborated with Mayor of England, Butch House, and the England Police Department to develop an app using Adobe where all accurate information can be shared. To ensure all data is reliable, the app is designed so only a select few individuals have access to posting updates. It is also user-friendly to all ages and constructed to be easily navigated. On our ESL project, students are translating the East banners in our classroom on Adobe Illustrator for our Spanish-speaking students. Some of our Hispanic students are limited to their East knowledge because of this language barrier, so some of our bilingual students found a solution. Because these banners don't have Spanish translations, students Edgar Tejada, Pealo Morales, Jose Mejia, and MJ Parks have been working alongside Mrs. Beckman, England School District's ESL Coordinator, to translate the words accurately. They have also worked with Ms. Jocelyn Johnson, an East staff member who has given them access to the official East poster files for them to edit. Once they complete the translated designs, they will share them with East headquarters where they can be distributed to all programs throughout the state. One of our more prominent projects, Eastern Music, run by Sydney McCalla, Aiden Cunningham, Cooper Price, Jayce Striplin, and Kayden Mullins, started because we had no after-school activities. They started a program to give kids the opportunity to learn instruments that interested them for free. In the process, they gained valuable experience in a variety of practical skills. Using Canva, they designed promotional materials like website banners and flyers, learning how to create visually engaging content. They implemented Google Forums to manage sign-ups and collect feedback, gaining insight into organizing and streamlining participant data. For the websites, students used Google Sites which showed them how to build and manage an online presence efficiently. Additionally, they are working toward establishing the program as a nonprofit organization, which has given them firsthand experience with the legal and administrative aspect of nonprofit formation. Writing bylaws and collaborating with employers has deepened their understanding of the legal framework necessary for starting and sustaining a nonprofit. Lastly, our Hootens project is a collaboration with Hootens Arkansas Football. Students Hayden Roberts, Wyon Johnson, Carson Carlisle, Nick Brown, and Dane Harper work to create a map on ArcGIS that displays all Arkansas native football players, what high school they played at, and where they are playing now at Arkansas colleges. It has evolved into adding every high school football program. This will allow Hootens to have easy access to all Arkansas football talent that has originated and stayed in our state.
We are community. Connections are one of the most important parts of a project, so community partners are our key to success. We have collaborated with Thomas Thrash at Hootens Arkansas Football, Butch House, Mayor of England, the England Police Department, Ms. Stephanie White, Mayor of KEO, The Walking America Couple, Mr. Bryan, our Transportation Director, Ms. Beckman, the ESL Coordinator at England School District, Mr. Sherman, an EHS school teacher, and many leaders from East Headquarters, including Ms. Rinda Hall, Ms. Jocelyn Johnson, and President Matt Dozier. We also like to involve people in our schools actively to come into our East room to experience our program. Katwylis, Avalonia East Alona, and our SROs visited one day and participated in team builders with our classes. The more people in our community that know what we can do, the more of a difference we can make.
We are student-led. We pride ourselves on being an environment full of leaders where we are capable of taking initiative in our learning and projects. Students lead in a variety of different ways, including actively translating foundations of East to some of our Spanish-speaking students, leading other students in team building activities, hosting special guests on their podcasts, conducting interviews with local coaches for Arkansas Sporting Network, and speaking to state officials at the Capitol about the work we are doing. Leading our education in East empowers us to be actively involved and find solutions to benefit our community.
We are success. Throughout the last six years that we have had our program, we have had many awards, opportunities, accolades, and successes that have put us on the map and proven we are capable of. Some of these accomplishments include the 2024 East Seminar showcasing our Eastern Music Project, being a 2024 program influence, having students on the 2024 and 2025 Leadership Documentation Team, attending the four-year-old East sharing scores for work on work with us, speaking at the 2023 quarter-day East Board Directors meeting at East H Camp, two students obtaining drone licenses, organizing a car show for Key Open College Festival, taking pictures at the Arkansas State Arkansas Razorbacks, UAPB, and UCA football games, having a successful 2024 East Night Out, winning Organization of the Year from the England Chamber of Commerce, winning many awards at East Con 2024, including the Best of Conference Booth Design, the Fay Jones Architectural Challenge winner, and the music competition. At East Con 2022, we won the first ever Eastern Influencer Award, Best of Conference, and Centered Booth Design Award, and the Judges' Choice Award. We were also featured on the line where we were able to share our excitement for East Con 2024. And we were invited to represent the Central Region of East for STEM Day at the Capitol where we met Governor Sanders and spoke to Senator Flowers and represented a pledge about the impact we are making through our East class.
We are East.
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 Nosotros somos East.
We are East.
We are East.
We are East.
So we just want to show you all that. It kind of just sums up who we are as a program and what we do, just so people who don't know about East can understand what we do and the impact we're making.
And in about three weeks, we're going to East Conference 2025. And basically, what conference is, is it's a statewide conference where all the programs, East programs in the state, come together and share what they've been working on, what, like, it's just a great way to learn what other programs are doing. That can help you, help influence us to be better in the future. And we wanted to invite y'all all to conference on March 19th. And we're very, and if you come there, we will be presenting five projects and that'll get you just a little glimpse into what we've been doing in our classroom.
How many schools around the state are involved with East?
Probably around 250 or...
Old schools?
Yes. And then there's one in Oklahoma, one in Louisiana, and one in Pennsylvania. I don't know how many.
That's all we have for you today. We hope you consider coming.
You're very good.
We're very honored. Thank you.
The date on the invitation for draw should be May 3, 19, 25 instead of 5, 19.
Wow.
About a million right under. We haven't knocked out our foundation.
It should end about 1.2.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, financial report. Scott, do you have a second on Mr. Towne, the first to add?
I'll close.
Next thing up is principal reports. Ms. Tammy?
Elementary current enrollment is at 349. We're at 3 from January. And then, Mr. Adams, I believe you asked last month to get an enrollment trend for the elementary school. I went back four years on that. I can go back through commonest and go farther if you would like, but I included that at the top of the report. February of '22, we were at 367. February of '23, we're at 359. February of '24, at 354, and then currently 349. Keeping in mind, we're one pre-K class short of what we normally are. We only have one pre-K class this year instead of two classes, so that's where the difference in enrollment's coming in for this year. At the elementary school, you will see third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade breakfast. We are doing that this year as our parent involvement, where parents and families are invited to come in and have breakfast with our students at that grade level. On the 6th was our third grade breakfast. The 13th was our fourth grade breakfast. The 27th, this Thursday, will be our sixth grade breakfast, and then we had to reschedule fifth grade to the 28th. On the 14th, we had our Valentine's Day parties. The 18th through the 21st was our scheduled third through sixth grade Atlas interims, and we got one day of testing done and then we were out for snow. So those are going to continue this week, Wednesday through Friday. On the 24th, we had parent-teacher conferences. It was a lower turnout, which it usually is a lower turnout for this conference than it is the first one. But our teachers do contact all parents that don't come to the conference by phone to make sure that they're staying in communication with parents. The 100th Day of School, dressed like your 100, moved from the 28th to March 4th because of those snow days. And then I included on the second page, just so you can see some of the communication that goes home because you got students at the elementary, REES reminders and date changes. And then on the back of that was our February and March newsletter that went home to parents as well. Any questions for the elementary?
Our current enrollment at the high school is 265. And I do have the enrollment trends on a spreadsheet behind. I think y'all just spend in your books. So I have the enrollment trends at the bottom of the principal's report. Like I said, we have 265 currently enrolled. Last year, this time, was 261. And that's actually a topo. It's actually 260. And then 2023 was 290. January 24th was the second on weeks AR field trip, which was a huge increase in students making their AR goals. We had 128 go on the field trip with over 140 making their AR goals. January 29th, the Bailey Group worked appeals with our teachers using the Atlas Blueprint Standards and Grade Level PLDs. February 3rd was our first makeup day from being closed due to winter weather. We have one more scheduled from our 17th, and we also have a couple more to make up from last week. February 4th was our monthly college wear day, where everyone wears college t-shirts. February 11th through 14th, grades 7 through 10 took that as interim assessments each morning. February 13th, we hosted our eighth annual poetry night. We had several students in grades 7 through 12 read original poems. February 14th, Bailey Group worked with our science teachers on live science standards, annotating and curriculum resources. That was also Valentine's Day, and we had several deliveries made that morning, and the community of Love Church also brought a snack bag for every student at the high school and delivered them. Junior girls and boys basketball teams finished their season and were named 2025 Conference and District Champions, and we are so proud of them. February Teacher Work Day was Monday, the 24th. That was also a parent-teacher conference. We had several, just like Ms. Tammy said, the numbers were down, but they normally are this time of year. The senior high basketball teams played in the 2A district tournament this past weekend, and then yesterday, the boys won the district championship against Barton. And they'll travel, both travel to the regional tournament at Barton, or actually at the Helena, PC, CUA Helena campus. Boys play tomorrow at 8:30 and the girls play on Thursday at 7:00. And then those games will determine Friday and Saturday games. Tomorrow, all juniors will take the ACT, and then we have the regional tournament, and then March 4th through 8th is the state basketball tournament at Seager Ridge.
All right. Any other questions for Spreet? Thank you. Next, we will have our desegregation order update. With us is Phil Brick from the law firm of Beckett, Doons, and Keats.
Good evening, Phil Brick. We're here to give a status report on our DSEG case or ongoing DSEG case and specifically our consent order in that case on faculty and staff. I'm going to give kind of a brief overview of the DSEG case and the order specific to district staff. If y'all were here last time, this is going to sound very familiar, but I agree with y'all during this. I want to make sure we cover it. And then Mr. Price is going to talk to y'all about the efforts that have been made in the last six months since the last status report on compliance with that order. And then when Mr. Price is done, we'll take any questions or comments from the community with regard to this report. So, um, so the district's been in a DSEG case since around 1970. It was involved with a bunch of other schools. Specifically, at that point in time, there was an order entered to desegregate along with the Cartrale School District. And so that order went into effect for the 1970-1971 school year. And at that point, all students were to attend the England School District and all faculty were to be fully integrated. The district was recently advised that it appeared to have met its DSEG obligations, and so it moved for a unitary status, essentially to get out of that lawsuit in 2022. As part of that effort to obtain unitary status, the notice of our efforts were published to the community and comments were submitted to the court. And there were another, a number of objections and comments, and the vast majority of those had to deal with hiring and retention of staff, specifically certified staff, coaches, administration, those types of things. And so the DOJ asked us to enter into a consent order to monitor our hiring and retention of certified employees and administrators. And so we agreed to that consent order and it went into effect about a year ago today. And that order will remain into, in effect until September 1st of 2026. And so, and again, the hiring procedures that are outlined in there are only applicable to certified staff and to administrators. You know, we, the district tries to hire the best qualified person in every role and doesn't discriminate for any reason. As part of the order, we are required to have an open recruitment process, so every position that becomes open, we have to advertise that on the district website, district social media pages, to online, you know, job application sources, and then at least two places in the community, churches, businesses, those types of things, for each position that we open. At every step in the process, for each, each position, we have to track the data. Who applied? Who was offered an interview? Who accepted an interview? Who was offered the position? And who accepted the position? You know, again, the district has all, makes all the hiring decisions under Arkansas law based on performance, effectiveness, and qualifications. And then, as part of, as part of the efforts that we do and that we're required to do under the order, we use standardized grading rubrics for each position, and we use those rubric scores to determine who to offer the job to. The district, as part of the consent order, has to document how it determined who to offer an interview to, who to offer a job to, and we have to keep records of all that to show the court and the, and the public that we're complying with that order. Along with its obligations in tracking hiring information, we also have to have a district-wide recruitment and retention team. It's made up of school administrations, certain certified employees, and that committee holds meetings and performs activities throughout the school year. And then Mr. Price will kind of talk to you about what's been done with that in the last six months. We're also to have a recruiting partnership with at least UAPB, Philander Smith, and Arkansas Baptist College. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Price to provide y'all the update on what we've come to last season.
Since last, we last met, we've done several things. Each of the members of the recruitment and retention team have done certain things. As for myself, I participated in the team meeting on January 13th to review the MOUs and brainstorm some new recruitment and retention ideas. And I visited UAPB community meeting to discuss the Pride Residency Program and to formulate a MOU outlining a partnership with, between the university and our district. I just received a letter the other day via email about that, and we're going to speak more after spring break and to see how we can get this thing moving forward. The high school principal, Trent Morgan, attended UAPB Fall Career Summit on October 2nd. He participated in a team meeting on January 13th to review the MOUs and brainstorm the recruitment and retention ideas. He visited Philander Smith University and Arkansas Baptist University on January 30th to discuss the possibility of creating a partnership between those universities and the district. He attended a retention breakfast on February 6th in the school, and he will attend the UAPB Spring Career Summit. The instructional facilitator, Belinda Livingston, participated in a team meeting January 13th to review the MOUs and come up with new recruiting and retention ideas. She organized the retention breakfast and created a satisfaction survey on February 6th, and she will also attend the UAPB Spring Career Summit. High school teacher, Ms. Rosemary Benjamin, participated in the team meeting on January 13th to review the MOUs and come up with new ideas for retention. Elementary school principal, Tammy Bimitt, attended UAPB 2024 Fall Career Summit on October 2nd. She participated in the team meeting on January 13th to review the MOUs, and she will attend the UAPB Spring Career Summit. Elementary school instructional facilitator, Mindy Martin, attended UAPB Fall Career Summit on October 2nd. She participated in the team meeting on January 13th, and she will attend UAPB Spring Career Summit. The elementary school teacher, Danielle Williams, participated in the team meeting on January 13th to review the MOUs and come up with new recruitment and retention ideas. We are trying to formulate partnerships with UAPB, Philander Smith, and Arkansas Baptist. I met with Dr. Kimberly Davis and Ms. Catricia Carter at UAPB January 29th for a community meeting to learn about UAPB's Pride Residency Program. And what that program is, is basically it's grooming teachers and they're putting them into schools. These future teachers are going into these schools and they're getting a little stipend and it gets them ready for, for actually teaching. Dr. Davis has issued a letter of support and we're going to formulate a MOU between UAPB and England School District to try to meet any needs that we may have in the future. With Philander Smith, Trent Morgan visited Philander Smith College on January 30th, and he met with Dr. Charity Smith, discussed the possibility of creating a recruiting partnership with the college. He also visited Arkansas Baptist on the same day. He was unable to meet with anybody there, but we're, we're going to continue to try. Our efforts to retain minority staff, we met, of course, on January 13th to review those MOUs and come up with new ideas, new recruitment ideas. The team had a, let me back that up. One of the things that we were looking at is, when someone moves into a community they're unfamiliar with, the only thing they know is where to go to show up for work. We need to have information. Where do they need to get, to have their electricity that turned on, their water turned on, things like that. We're putting together a packet for new teachers that come in to this district, so they will know who to call, where to go, things like that. Where do you get your internet? Where do you pay your water bill? All those things are important, and that's one of the things that we want to help people transition into the community. And the recruitment and retention team had their retention breakfast on February 6th, in which our newest African-American teachers were provided breakfast, and they were asked to provide ideas and suggestions with regard to recruiting minority teachers. And then they completed a satisfaction survey and the results were positive. They really had no complaints. They spoke very well of our school. So what are the results of our efforts for the 2024 school year since we last met? In January, we hired one African-American Special Education teacher at the high school. It was a win-win because not only were we able to move toward fulfilling this DOJ order, but we also were able to hire a teacher who'd been in the district for a number of years, and we could reward that loyalty. No other positions have become available since then or before then, so that was it at the high school. And in the elementary school, there had been no covered positions available since the September report.
At this point, if you have any questions or comments, happy to address those.
Dr. Shep, if you'd like to. If you have something to say.
You guys don't have the podium. My company asks you the same thing. They sit down and talk to you. I've read your, most of the initial report from some correspondence that you guys have been having, or not you, the attorneys have been having between Mr. Eichner at the Department of Justice, Mr. Keys, and Mr. Brake at the law firm. You entered into this consent order last February of '24. And specifically in regard to the partnership, you don't, you haven't shown a whole lot of progress. You've had a year to work on partnerships, and it didn't say you might work on it. It didn't say you will work toward it. He said, "You will establish these partnerships." And a whole year's passed, and you have nothing in writing. You have no written agreement, partnership agreements with any of these institutions, Philander, Arkansas Baptist, or UAPB. And that's disappointing to us. Because again, you've had a whole year to get this done. And I don't know what you've done with your time, the staff, and I hear you talk about some recent activities that have occurred this year in January, but that's January of 2025. What did you do from February into December? Now, those are legitimate questions that all of you should want to be able to answer. We offered, the Cartel Alumni Association offered to assist you in developing and establishing these partnerships. Dr. Steps used to work for Dr. Charity Smith. For years, they have a great relationship. One of the other alumni members, Dr. Phyllis Anderson, who runs the school with Liverott, she teaches at the university with Dr. Smith. Dr. Hertz over at Arkansas Baptist College is my fraternity brother. The people at UAPB, Dr. Shep's went to school there. You're not taking advantage of the resources that we're offering to help you get out of court too. Everybody wins if the England School District is out of court. I think we can all agree on that, Cam. I mean, we all win, right? Now, we're willing to do our part, but you've had a year to do your part. Now, what you have done is, it appears that you're, you're continuing to pay attorneys instead of making even, even putting some of that, those funds toward establishing the partnerships. You know, Mr. Brake and his group, they're professional people, and I respect that, but you paid them $35,000 last year. $35,000 in the last 10 months to defend a consent order that's already in place. Now, I know England's a poor school district. $35,000 would buy a whole lot of backpacks for kids. It'd buy a whole lot of smart boards for kids. And that's just the last 10 months. I had a chance to review the entire report, and I can give you the number at the next meeting, but I hope that we've made some substantial progress between now and the next meeting. You've got to reach out to us and let us help you get this done. The key is not hiring the, the only minority or black applicant that comes to the table, because I think Mr. Price is doing his job with that. I think he's working with what comes to the table. People have to apply before he can even consider hiring them. So with that in mind, you know, he gets an A+ there. You as a district get an F though, because you've had one whole year to establish three partnerships, and you have, you don't have one on paper. That's not a good sign when we have a conversation with Mr. Eichner at the Justice Department. Those partnerships will help you grow your own teachers from those institutions. They'll help make England a school of choice. It's only 30 minutes from the metros, any metro here in central Arkansas, only 30 minutes. But you've got to, you've got to work to develop those partnerships. You've got to, to have lunch with those kids who are in the education department. You've got to put them on a bus and bring them to England and let them tour the school and be a part of the school days, a part of their practicum. They're all required to do those hours in school buildings. Teachers, kids still do student practice. And when you do those things, you'll start developing and building those relationships. And then when those kids graduate, they'll remember those pleasant experiences that they had in England, Arkansas. And they'll consider coming here versus you going out and knocking on doors and sending flyers to all the local churches, these things that are mandatory in the consent order. Let the, let the institutions work for you and work with you. And again, you know, no offense to professional people, they, they should get paid what they're worth. But we're spending a little too much on that end and not enough developing these partnerships, and it's going to cost you more as we continue to stay in court with you. And I think that's a very simple equation. We want the same things you want. But you have to see the long picture. And the long picture next year is, under the governor's laws, that this, that kids can go anywhere in the state they want to go next year. Isn't that right, Mr. Brake?
What's that?
Students can go to any school in the state they want to go next year, can't they?
I think it's been that way.
Next year, it doesn't have to be failing schools. Don't have to leave an F school. They can go anywhere. The money follows them. Children in this community like to see the same thing you want to see, a diverse teaching population. It's nothing for Pulaski County to park a bus at Scott and take kids to Silver Hills or Mills. There's nothing for Pine Bluff that prevents them from doing the same thing, meeting kids at Jefferson Line, at the Camden Line. You've got to think long-term, and the impact is important. Parents need to see diverse teaching faculty groups. And I think, again, you know, Mr. Price, you know, you're making the effort. And I think it's commendable when you hire the applicants that come to the school, but that won't work in the long term. If you're not secure your teaching pool, you've got to, you've got to move forward with a different, more aggressive plan. And we'll be, we'll be writing our concerns to Mr. Eichner at the Department of Justice, and we'll share them with them as well. So unless Dr. Steps has something else to say.
I just want to make a statement or ask a question. After you were stating all the different summits and retention, retaining meetings that several staff had attended, out of those meetings, have there been any programs that have come out of those areas that they've visited to come in and meet with the students? Have the students benefited any, or this has all been planning?
Now, this was, this was like a career fairs where we go to them. I did not go, attend the UAPB career fair. Ms. Britney, you attended it, did you not?
No, Coach Morgan.
I attended.
Okay. You might be able to answer that question.
We also had a career fair here too. We had a career fair here too, and UAPB came last fall.
And for, a career for teachers to apply?
It was just, I think, just recruiting students.
Students to attend?
Yes. And what programs they offer and things like that.
So pretty much everything that has really been done is just plan and process, nothing actually in concrete from those meetings?
The only thing that's come out of that, the meeting with UAPB, when I went down there, they sent me a letter, and they said that we're going to have an MOU and that we're going to start working together after spring break.
So what do you hope to gain?
I hope to gain access to some teachers. That's, that's what I'm looking for. That's, I'm, I'm, I'm not so much process oriented as I'm results oriented. The process is one thing, but I want to see the results. You know, there, there wasn't a lot we could do this year. We only had one position that opened up, but we got the result we were looking for and hoping for. And I want to continue that until we can, you know, have a staff, as you say, reflective of our population. But I, right now, I don't know what we're going to need. I don't know our needs for the fall. So I can't, you know, my crystal ball's a little fuzzy there, and I, I'm going to have to see what we need before I can go to UAPB and say, "Listen, we need this, this, and this." So there's nothing that they can do right now as we're stocked up, but when, once we find out, then we can say, "Okay, this is what we need. Do you have these people? Can you put them, send them to us?" That's what I'm hoping.
So as far as the, I know we have two assistant principals?
Yes. Now, there are two principals.
Two, oh, so you have two actual principals? But no vice principal?
No.
Okay. That's just odd. That's odd. That's why I asked that. Why did England choose to have two principals instead of a principal, an assistant principal?
The Guy Perkins model, they're using it, and Guy Perkins is working well. Matter of fact, I spoke with the superintendent up there, and he says that they've had a lot of inquiry on how they're, how they're doing. And the reason it works so well is if there's, one is gone, I have another principal who can step in and be principal and take care of everything right on the spot.
You know, a capable vice principal should be able to do that too.
That's right. They should be able to do that. But they also have to answer to a principal. These, what I have here, both of them can handle the job completely without having to check with one another. They're all on the same page. They're on the same page as I am, and it's, it works.
Well, it's your, it's your model. I had lots of questions about that because of the administrative functions the last time, but you know, we won't get into that. Having one administrator write all of the documentation that the state requires, to me, makes that person the principal. And we've talked about Coach Morgan's role before. You know, as more of a support service-oriented role versus that administrative role that fills out necessary paperwork required by the state. You know, and I think that's a little shady, but you know, you guys run that one. My priority, my main concern here is that you've got to be more aggressive with developing those partnerships with the university. You, you have got to be more aggressive. You can't, you can't wait around for results. You've got to be a partner, Price, of the process and how it's articulated starts with you and the board president, and it works its way down through the faculty and the staff. Again, we've offered to assist, and I do not mind assisting you. There's no charge associated with our help. You know, we're, we're offering to help you because you've got to build a pipeline to keep personnel coming in, into this community for the next decade or 20 years, however long this process plays itself out, long when you're out of court. This still has to be a part of what people want to do on their own terms and want to be employed in the England School District. So again, we've offered your, we've offered our assistance.
I just want to say one, one thing to that. Just trying to be constructive here. You know, we documented everything that the district has done to try to get in touch with these three schools. There, it hadn't just been in the last six months, it was the six months before that. There've been calls made, there've been emails, they've gone there personally, and they've established a relationship with UAPB. But Arkansas Baptist is not responding, and Philander Smith, Dr. Smith said it would be hard for us to attract teachers, but wanted us to hire her personal company to consult with her. And so I would just encourage you, if you have relationships with these people at these two colleges, to please let them know that we are trying to establish a partnership. I'm inviting you to do that, because we are trying to do that. We have made multiple calls, sent multiple emails, been there in person, and have been able to get this off the ground. A partnership is, is, is two people. And we've been trying to do everything we can to establish this partnership, and are not getting anything on the other side. So if you have those relationships, by all means, please let them know to reach back out to us so that we can establish those partnerships.
Yeah, Mr. Brake, that invitation needs to come from Mr. Price, though.
Well, I'm.
With us. And I know you're representing.
No one has told y'all not to do that, to my knowledge, so by all means, please do that.
I don't care where a good idea comes from, as long as it's a good idea. And I don't care where help comes from, as long as it's help.
Well, we share, we, if, if you'll share, you know, planned meetings with us, let us reach out. Some of those people are not responsive to you, might be more responsive to us, you know?
And a phone call to them, that'd go a long way to let them know to reach back out to your school district to help form these partnerships.
And, and we, we are, we, we just have relationship with those, those individuals at those institutions. And you know, even if we get five students who have minimal interest, perhaps one or two might end up being a potential hire. So, so we will, and Mr. Price, I've reached out to you before, you know that, and I will again, to see when you're planning, and Dr. Steps and I, if we, if she can work her schedule, will be more than happy to try to work around a scheduled visit to have conversations before the visit with those institutions.
That'd be one.
Yeah, yeah. That's something that, I don't know if everybody knows it, but I live right here in England. I've taught at England High School. I graduated from England High Schools, and I'm willing to assist you in any way possible. So we're not enemies. We're in this together. We got the, we trying to, we got a common goal here. So I have no problem, you know? I don't have to get a paycheck to do what I want to do. So the point is, if you want my assistance, I have no problem assisting you. Because if it's one thing I can do, I know how to communicate, and I know how to get things done. So if you want my help, I have no problem doing that. And matter of fact, I have no problem doing some volunteer work here. I'm right down the street. So that's my main goal, because what I'm tired of seeing is all the parents showing up for ballgames and every athletic event, but something like this, you don't see them. And somebody has to get out there and make them feel like it's necessary, they should know it, but you can't assume it, but it's, we need to get partnerships right here in England first and then move out. But I'm willing to. And all those names that you call, as far as Dr. Smith, we know each other personally. So I don't have no problem reaching out to her and talking to her about what England has to offer and what they can offer to us. So I'll be, matter of fact, I want to be over here more often, but it's over here to help, not to hinder or to find criticism. So my point is coming over to find out what I can do, because I've been away from the school for five years, but I still know the same needs are here. So I have no problem.
Well, thank you. I'll be in contact.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be here.
Thank you very much. I mean, again, I think a good first step is if you know Dr. Nelson or Dr. Smith, to let them know that we really need to establish these partnerships, and we're trying to reach out to them to do that.
And I think the best way to deal with them is to go see them and talk to them face-to-face and just give them a firsthand of what the needs are here, what we're trying to accomplish. And I think they will move a little, little faster.
Sure. And Mr. Morgan, I mean, I don't know if you saw, it's, it's, there's a lot of paperwork here, but Mr. Morgan went and did that, just didn't have any, didn't get a good result from that.
Yeah, it'll be a little different, because we work together.
Yeah, so again, it's, it's a partnership, so anything y'all can do to help us establish that partnership would be helpful. I didn't catch that gentleman's name, but if, if he can help.
Dr. Nelson.
Okay. Anything he can do to help too.
Yeah.
I mean, again, we're, we're providing reports on all of our efforts that we're making to try to establish these partnerships, and if there's anything that y'all can do to help on the other end, we would certainly appreciate it.
And I know we want more diverse teachers, but we also need other things that we need other than the actual faculty. It's just some things that the students need, and we, and that partnership gained some of those things too. It's just some things that the students need, and we, and that partnership gains some of those things, too.
Any other comments or questions? I think that's it.
Next is the ADE Fiscal Services Support Early Intervention Program. Uh, I received a call from the ADE. They are going to put us in this early intervention. Uh, they identified us as being a candidate for the Early Intervention Program. It's what happens when your balance, your ending balance continually is declining over a period of years. Uh, I think our balance has gone down five years consecutively. So they identified us. I'm gonna go meet with them on March 4th at the Capitol, meet with Dr. Saunders and his team, and we're gonna see if we can get this worked out so we can turn that around. They, they will go over, and they said, just about everything in the district and with a fine tooth comb and see where we can save money, where we can, uh, stop spending money.
Maybe we can get a committee together to look at that. How we can, don't do it by yourself, but you'll-
Well, that's what, that's what-
Call saving committee, people that are kind of savvy with saving money, like what can, think outside the box. How can we save some money in the district? Don't do it by yourself. Put a little committee together and how can we save some money?
Yeah, I'm gonna look into, into doing that, and, uh, that's one of the things that they're gonna go over is, basically, they're gonna take every aspect of the school and go at it and say, okay, what about this? What about this? So I'll be up there on March 4th, meeting with them to do that.
Mark, anything else for me?
No, no, thank you, Phil.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Next thing that we've got is, uh, the CSSO, uh, survey results. At the beginning of, at the front of this, you're gonna see a letter that I received from, uh, Sheriff John Stanley of the Lone Oak County Sheriff's Department. "On behalf of the Lone Oak County Sheriff's Department, I fully support your initiative to implement a commissioned schools, uh, school security officer CSSO program in the England School District. Your commitment to school safety aligns with our mission to protect students, faculty and staff. A strong partnership between education and law enforcement is essential for school security. The CSSO program will provide trained security, a trained security presence ensuring rapid response to emergencies while fostering positive relationships within the school community. To support this initiative, I have assigned a deputy to the schools while we work on a long-term agreement to maintain law enforcement presence. This ensures immediate access to trained personnel while a sustainable plan is developed. The Lone Oak County Sheriff's Office remains committed to assisting England School District through officer training, safety planning and ongoing support. This program will serve, will serve as a valuable asset in protecting our schools and enhancing security measures. Thank you for your leadership in prioritizing school safety. I look forward to working together to implement this initiative successfully." Last, uh, last meeting, I asked to, uh, table this conversation until we got input. So we, there's the following pages. I'll give you a chance to read some of the, uh, comments that were made. According to the numbers, sixty-five percent support it, twenty-five percent oppose it, ten percent have questions about it.
Who needs a server? The teachers?
Yeah, we put it out.
The community.
The community.
Is this gonna be in the same price range as what we were already paying?
Yes. The, actually, if we, this would be funded by the money that, from the first semester, where we did not have a, a SRO. It'll go over that budget, but it should be more than, uh, made up for, for the second semester as, uh, Sheriff Stanley is charging us for our SRO this semester.
I had a chance to read over this the other day, and I had some questions on it myself. Um, one of my concerns is, uh, teachers, not faculty, being armed. We're worried about more of the teacher in the classroom being armed, uh, possibly being overpowered, a gun being taken. Uh, that was, uh, after reading this, it was kind of putting some current concern in my own thought and head on this.
Sure.
Um, so I don't know if I agree that the teachers should be armed, um, but maybe faculty members, uh, of England School District, um, that aren't in a classroom. Um, I know there's a lot of schools that are doing the CSO program across the state, or a CSSO program. But, um, I don't know, once again, you don't know who it is, you don't know who's armed. But my one concern is that kids seeing it in classroom, making a thing of it, or, and knowing who has one at that point, um, versus a faculty member that they may not see for hours in a classroom type thing. So, and I, I, all these concerns are very valid, and I know there's a lot of positive, too. But, uh, I'd just like to play devil's advocate a little bit on that.
Well, I've been in a district where they did have this before, and no one ever found out because it, these are deep concealed. No one's, I mean, it's gonna be hard to find out who actually has it. Uh, is it possible to find out? And I'm sure it is. You know, especially at the elementary where, you know, the kids come up and hug you, things like that. And that's one of the things that we discussed with people that, that, uh, wearing that belt. And it, you know, they said that, that they thought they would be able to, to handle it. And I've, I've called a number of schools that have this program. They said they've never had any issue, issues with that at all. And, you know, of course, there's no issue with it until there is. And that's the one thing you have to look at. So this is just an option for us. But right now, we don't have much of a plan.
No, I know this is just the beginnings.
The problem is, we just continue, the problem is keep, is to turnover of giving SROs, SROs, it's hard.
We keep having these breaks in periods, we don't get them, so what do we do during this period?
Yeah. We didn't have one from October eighteenth until three weeks ago.
But that seems pretty steady now, that's.
So far, it does.
But that's-
It's good for a while, it's not good for a while, it's good for a while, it's not good for a while.
Been a consistent, uh, turnover, high turnover rate.
I think I've been here three years and we've had at least six.
Yeah.
Have we figured out why?
Because these people that sign up for this get a chance to go work somewhere else for more money.
Just a high turnover.
And they leave. The larger police departments have more of a war chest to spend on their officers, and they, they will do that.
The officers, the funding here, the whole city funding.
Your city police departments are the lowest paid of any law enforcement in the state, period.
And it's just, it's a, they start here and then they step, you know, this.
No, I, I totally agree that we have to do something to protect these kids. And this, this, my, my only concern was the classroom portion. And being in the classroom with students versus faculty that could respond, you know, from this office or principal standpoint, you know, or, you know, maintenance, outside, you know.
Well, these things-
You can probably modify some of, yeah.
You, you could do this, and one of the things is a coach can't carry this. Yes, they can, because we had one. And he had it on him at all time, even while coaching.
In your maintenance books and, and different books, different people.
You could spread it out.
Spread it out, different books.
But, uh, yeah, I mean, I agree that something is, we need to do something that's gonna be sustainable even when we don't have an SRO. Not to say that this is to replace a school resource officer.
No, this is just another level of protection.
Um, I know we've talked about training before. Uh, the other thing we talked about was the, uh, uh, security grant. Where are we at with the?
We just got sixty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars that we're going to use to put up cameras. We're going to have two of those walk-through metal detectors like you have at the courthouse that we can, that are gonna be portable. We can take them from the football field to the basketball, uh, gym. So we'll be able to cut down on that. The problem, I would love to be able to have all the students go in every day, but it would take probably forty minutes to get them all into classes.
Yeah.
But we can at least cut down on events. The, the, the possibility, we can lower that possibility, lower the danger there, and hopefully eliminate it as best we can. There's no way you can completely eliminate it. If someone's that unhinged as to, they're going to do this, and they're gonna try to do it. But you can at least lower your odds, and you can protect these kids in a better way than what we've done right now.
Yeah. And I, I looked at the statistics of this program. Um, the response times is within minutes, and without it, uh, law enforcement is average around thirteen minutes response time before they even enter a building.
Excellent. And we did our live test at the other school I was at. It was thirteen minutes before they arrived to campus.
You could probably cut that in half.
Yeah, I mean, well, with-
With this, it'll be a minute or two.
Yeah.
Because they will be here on the campus.
I bet you can cut it, yeah, you can cut it to three to six minutes. If it's thirteen minutes, I bet you can cut it to three to four.
As far as the grant, where are you talking about putting cameras? I think we're, we're not camera four on those cameras.
Well, I will say, I did a visit at the school, and I will say they're not the best cameras. They're outdated, um, and you can't really see faces. And nor do they have good view angles on some of them.
We, we need external cameras outside. That's where we're hurting the most. Now, we're going to replace the high school interior cameras because they're ten years old. And if you blow them up to see something, they get pixelated, and then the, the field of view is-
It may be something else. When we first put these cameras in, you could zoom right up on people like it was nothing now. But those, we looked at the other day, weren't like that.
No.
Some of them weren't.
Yeah.
Elementary's got good cameras. They're newer cameras.
We might have to wait till some grant, but we, it's been a lot of work.
But we got the grant.
They need to use all the money for that, because I don't know about buying metal detectors. I mean, I understand that-
It takes a lot of time.
Yeah, I know we want people, we, we want people at football games, or we want people at the basketball games, too.
I didn't know we even wanted them at football games.
We've got, we've got the wants.
Yeah.
We just haven't had the people-
To do it.
To do it.
I'd, I'd rather spend all that money on cameras. That's just me. I mean, to me, when you start putting up metal detectors and there's not a problem right now, I mean, not saying we're gonna have an incident, but you're gonna run parents off simply for the fact they're gonna say, oh, it must be really dangerous over there. They're putting metal detectors everywhere.
Agreed.
So it's, it's the image that you're putting out there. If we were having lots of trouble, people bring them weapons to the games and stuff, I can't understand, but I mean, you can always go one step up. You can put fences and everybody comes through one fence, or you gonna have it on both doors. I mean, it's just, it's the, it's the view, everybody's gonna see the school and they're like, it's really dangerous over there. I'm not even gonna send my kid over there because they got them metal detectors.
But don't they have them at other schools?
Some schools in Lone Oak, they have trouble. The trouble is, no, they ain't good schools. They have trouble. That's why I'm saying, that's why they come in there. Huh?
They hit all the schools.
No, they hit all of them. They have a bunch of them.
One that have a lot of trouble.
I agree with you on that perspective.
What's the image, if you're presenting a good image, huh?
Yeah, I do think the, one of our biggest things is the cameras.
But we're-
And after seeing it firsthand, I, I definitely agree with it.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna give a ton of cameras. We're right now just looking at quotes and getting information. We're, I got the approval for it yesterday. That's what we're gonna do.
Oh, you're gonna spend some more than sixty-one thousand on cameras. That's, those, those are now just cheap at all.
I think we're looking in the forties.
For this whole facility, yes?
Well, most of them are going into the high school, and all they gotta do is just go up there and replace them.
Because it's already hardwired.
Right.
It just depends on the guy that you're running the cable is good enough to run the data, but through it, I mean, just cable, it advances just like the cameras do. They can't push, push the bandwidth through. It ain't, it ain't gonna shit send for a dish. We got a vote on this, or?
I think we need to.
Does it require, I mean, I, I, if we're going to do it, i- i- do we need to wait till we have something set in place of what is going to be the required training? Uh, I know the CSSO program has its own, but we talked about, uh, further training and implementation of- and not just, and situational based training, things like that, not just how well can you shoot? But how can you shoot in a, in a high-stress environment?
Uh, well, that goes on next month with training.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, do you have a, a-
We brought an SOP for it, standard operating procedure.
I've not gotten that far yet.
But we can vote on that. Yeah, we've got an SOP. You gotta have an SOP, standard operating procedure for the whole thing, pro, whole program of what we can prove.
And we can just table this, Sam?
Yeah. It's gotta be a whole laid out. SOP, here's our standard operating procedure, duh, 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 all laid out.
How you gonna choose people and everything else?
Who's gonna oversee it? You need to oversee it. Who's gonna oversee it? It's kind of-
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll table and come back to it. Next thing. Wilbur Mills need approval to pay our, uh, PD.
Just on a federal form?
Uh, yes.
Just wanna make a motion. Motion, Mr. Adams, may I say? Second by Mr. Jones, all first, I, I oppose seven oh.
Let's see. Next is Gallagher Risk Management Service, legal liability coverage. Uh, this is the one that, uh, they changed in, uh, they went away from one company and to this other company.
And we got through the Arkansas School Board Association to get this.
Right.
So it's the lowest cost?
They vet that. They, they send the quotes out. They get the best coverage and the best rate for us.
Worship Mason will make a motion to approve eight thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars for Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Adams, may I say? Second by Mr. Adams, all first, I, I oppose seven oh.
See, the next thing is a change from a previous, uh, board-approved invoice from, uh, September seventeenth. It was twenty-three thousand nine oh four forty-seven, or, I'm sorry, it was twenty-three thousand one thirty-eight twenty-five, and it went to twenty-three nine oh four, uh, forty-seven, and the difference is seven sixty-six twenty-two. Uh, that was a change in prices between the time that it was approved and the time that we got it ordered.
How long they get?
That's all from-
How long they prove the quote, though?
That's, uh, uh, it, I don't know. I don't have that quote. It was, usually they keep it for thirty days.
You looked at on the invoice, how long they got?
Yeah. I looked at this and did not see anything that said anything about it. But it, it took us a while to get it all done and get it ordered.
We've got it now, no.
We, yeah, we should have it all.
So we'll make a motion for seven sixty-six point two-two, March machinery.
I made a motion to approve the difference of seven sixty-six twenty-two.
Motion, Mr. Jones, may I say? Second by Joey Adams, all first, I, I oppose seven oh.
And finally, Ed Menham. Uh, this is our license renewal, and it is twenty-six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, this is, Ed Menham is what we use for, well, a lot of things, but just, I'll give you a four instance. If we have to get, do credit recovery, things like that, those are the programs that we use, and this is-
Federal one or two?
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Ed Menham quote. Motion, Mr. Jones, may I say? Second, second by- Mr. Jones, all first, I, I oppose seven oh. I was waiting on you, Lynn. I thought you meant, I just couldn't get that to come out.
You impersonate them.
You impersonate? Do you need an announcement? Yeah, discuss.
Seven four six.
Pass on your personnel. All right, any other business?
I've got a deal here that I, I can't even scout anyone, but I got it from the School Board Association, a, a deal about scholarship programs. Uh, because none of us got many kids in college and the things, I just couldn't make sure.
Yeah, that went out.
What scholarship is that? You got the Arkansas School Board Association, you got the, we're members of the rule, uh-
Yeah, one of them was for board member kids.
Yeah, that's that one.
And then there was another one on there, but I don't think it was just for board member kids.
One is for one of the employees' child and one of the district child. That's the Rule Educator Association. It's in the ladder.
This was for school board members. I'm sure it's not running it up.
Arkansas Rule School Association? Yeah, they're all got, there's, there's lots of scholarships, but that's for the council. Yeah, they're, they're lots of association, but that's for the council, I'm just, I'm just-
Yeah, that, all that went out, anyhow, I got it myself, so all the kids should-
But I just wanted to let everybody know, I didn't take any of the stuff, but-
We don't have to make a motion on that deal or anything, we don't?
That's all we have.
Someone make a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
Nah, second, second, yeah.